Welcome to the February 8, 2024, meeting of the Municipality of Anchorage zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. The Secretary, please call the roll.
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Dave Hale.
Here.
Dale Smythe. Andrew Ramardal.
Here.
Brian Flynn.
Here.
Travis Santo.
Here.
Jackie Savina. You have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business are minutes. We have minutes from December 14, 2023. May I have a positive motion for approval, please? Moved by Dave Hale, seconded by Brian Flynn. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. Is there any opposition to approval of the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. Next is special order of business. Are there any disclosures for this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda, resolutions for approval. Can I have a positive motion for approval of the consent agenda? Dale Smythe moved and Dave Hale seconded. Is there any opposition to approval of the consent agenda? Seeing none, here and none, the consent agenda is approved and will move on. Nothing under appearance requests, nothing under unfinished business, and nothing on the regular agenda. And that brings us to public hearings. In public hearings, the two cases that we have are both variances, and I will go over the procedure by which the public may speak to the board at the... After the staff presentation is completed on the public hearing item, the chair will ask for the applicant to state their case. The applicant, including all of his or her representatives, has 10 minutes for presentation and may reserve time for rebuttal at the end of the public hearing. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant who must convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. A concurring vote of a majority of a fully constituted membership board minus those excused by conflicts of interest shall be required to grant a variance. For a variance to be granted, all eight standards must be substantially met. On the conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the chair. The chair will then open the hearing to public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow time limits established in the rules of procedure. Representative of groups, which include community councils, PTAs, et cetera, have five minutes, and individuals have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the board. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the board. Time is kept by the secretary. The display at the front will be green to within one minute of the time allowed, then turn yellow. At this time, you should begin to sum up your testimony, and at the end of the allowed time, the light will turn red and a tone will sound. An individual may have appeal rights related to any action the zoning board of examiners and appeals takes. The parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of decision to file an appeal to Superior Court. So, first case. The first case is case number 2024-0015, and the applicant is Hannah Hackinson. Will the staff please describe the evidence... or please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On January 17, 2024, a total of 112 public hearing notices were mailed. The neighbor closest to the setback encroachment provided a letter of support for the variance, and no other public comments were received. The Hillside Community Council did not provide comments.
Thank you. Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is a request for a variance from Table 2106-1, the Dimensional Standards for Residential Districts, and it's to allow a deck to encroach three feet within a 10-foot side setback. So, the subject lot is located in R6, low-density residential zoning district, near the corner of Nordic Street and downhill circle. The single-family home and the majority of the decks were constructed prior to January 1, 1986, and it is considered legally non-conforming. The single-family home therefore enjoys the rights afforded by a certificate of non-conforming encroachment as recognized by the attached determination from October 31, 2023. However, the encroaching deck in question that is attached to the single-family home was added sometime after January 1, 1986, which means that the deck is not considered a legal non-conforming structure. And that's why the petitioners are here tonight requesting the variance to allow the deck to continue encroaching three feet into the 10-foot side setback. The deck encroachment was discovered by MOA zoning review during a review of a new building permit for a structure on the other side of the house. I believe it was a detached garage, and then this issue came up. So, in the findings of the standards, staff finds that standard A is partially met. The petition site is legally non-conforming R6 lot, subject to the dimensional standards of R7. It's on a cul-de-sac bulb, and the average slope of the lot is approximately 16%. So, driveway standards, you can't exceed 10, and the provided topography map shows steeper areas on the property. So, the existing single-family home structure was built in the northwest corner, which is a more level area, but it was only 13.4 feet from the property line due to the slope and topography. While it's not super extreme slopes, the lot is subject to slopes, which limits the developer area on the lot when citing the driveway and the house we're planning to design. In the condition of B, staff finds that's partially met. The R7 district requires a 10-foot side setback. As I mentioned, the existing single-family home was constructed only 13.4 feet from that line with an egress door located on both floors of the home. So, while there are no extraordinary physical constraints to the property, the strict application of the code places undue hardship on the property owner and could deprive them of the ability to enjoy, commonly enjoy, amenity as well as means of ingress and egress into the home. So, decks are not as permanent as houses, but they do add substantial value to property by creating outdoor spaces with a sense of privacy. Staff finds condition C is met. The hardship is not self-imposed. The property owners did not construct the existing deck but were under the impression that it was legally non-conforming structure when they purchased their home in 2020, as it has existed for over 40 years. The circumstances do not appear to result from the actions of the applicant as the deck was existing prior to the owner's purchasing the property. Standard D, the staff finds that is met. It assumes the violation will not be injurious to the neighborhood or the public welfare if granted. So, given the character, history, sizes of all the lots in the neighborhood, it doesn't appear that granting a variance would adversely affect the use of adjacent properties. So, it should be noted that the nearest structure to the existing deck is approximately 66 feet away with mature vegetation between the two, and that neighbor provided a letter of support for the variance. Staff finds condition E is met. The requested variance, it's not going to change the character of the R6 zoning district. The requested variance is dimensional and not a variance for prohibited use. Staff finds condition F's met. The existing encroachment doesn't impact any of the health, safety, and welfare, traffic flow, utilities, or anything like that, groundwater. They're seeking a relief from the side setback requirement. So, if approved, then they will be able to obtain the building permit that they originally came in for to build a detached garage, and that's going to be on the other side of the lot. Standard G is met, and then standard H, staff finds that is met. The deck only encroaches three feet into the side setback, and that amount of encroachment is considered de minimis because it is so small. As stated, decks are commonly enjoyed amenities of single-family homes to provide extended outdoor living space. The requested variance is the minimum variance that would allow continued use of the recently expanded deck before they bought the property. I think we should turn to page... Well, we can start at page 19 of the staff report. I'm not sure if you guys get the color copies or not, but you can see the deck on 19, but right there at the edge of the grass. You maybe turn to page 20, and you can see some survey stakes there, and that says property line. And you can really see on page 21, the deck, and then right about where the grass line is, is where the property line is. So, on a one-acre property, you know, the common person purchasing a home would look at that, and you wouldn't really think that that's your property line, right there at the edge of the grass so close. Those stakes are in there as they had the surveyor come out and mark them for them. You can see the ingress and egress doors as well with the stairs on page 21. So, with that, let's see here, I'll finish out. Staff finds that, you know, in order for us to recommend approval, we have to find that all eight have been met. Staff only found A and B are partially met, and that C, D, E, F, G, and H are met, but therefore the department recommends denial of the variance. However, after the public hearing, if the board finds that all eight approval criteria are met, then they should be subject to conditions 1 and 2 found on page 5 and 6 of the staff packet. Thank you. I can answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions of staff by the board? Seeing none. Are there any questions of staff by the applicant?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dixon. Myself, my wife, Hannah, who submitted the application for variance. We would like to...
Do you have any...
No questions.
Questions? Okay, thank you. Would you state your... and spell your name for the record?
Yeah, sorry about that. So, my name's David Hawkinson. Last name is H-A-A-K-I-N-S-O-N.
Thank you. Please present your case.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, thank you. So, we purchased this property late 2020. In Q2 last year, we submitted application for a building of a detached garage that was on the property. Through that process, we then learned that we had basically our deck that was, as he discussed, was into that setback. At that point in time, it was unbeknownst to us. We didn't know that even when purchasing the property. From that point, you know, talking, you know, with our neighbors, understanding that, when the house was built in 1978, there's an actual... most of the deck, the part that I can speak to, I believe it's page 17, the part of the deck that is seven feet, that's the closest part, that deck has... that part of the deck has been there since day one. It actually then was... went, ran parallel to the building. And so, from that, I can superimpose satellite images at sometime between 2002 and 2009. The previous owner had added a section that runs somewhat parallel to that 10-foot setback. That's where he added that point there to put additional stairs that went down to grade. And so, the deck that's up on the second level from, you know, the egress of all of our bedrooms goes down to... onto this deck, and then those... that additional stairs were added down to the ground level. So, at that point, that's where the basically non-conformance comes from, where it was built into the 10-foot setback after that 1986 demarcation. So, from that, we're, you know, we're seeking a building permit for the detached garage. I'll speak to just the two standards that were partially met. He spoke the other six standards that were substantially met. The finding on the A where, you know, there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject properties, such as, but are not limited to streams, wetlands, or slope, and these circumstances are not applicable to other lands, same district. You know, by definition, and that the property, the house, as he stated, is actually built 13 feet from the property line. You know, at 1978, I don't necessarily know what the laws, regulations were at that point, but that's, as I say, unstandard. Most other homes within the neighborhood are all built in the center part of a lot. Ours is not. From that point, they built that deck into that 10-foot setback in 1978. Calling to page 8, something that's actually is extraordinarily different about our lot, other than just the topography itself, there's actually two topographical lows, so basically two holes. So, on the right side, closest to the road, during that point, there's... it's significant deep, and during the spring runoff, what will happen is actually the water will actually pull up. So, all the water will run down the road from neighboring properties and then basically partially fill that land with water, right? So, a period of time, so when we were looking at building this detached garage, one of the thoughts that we were looking at was, well, we don't have much space, there's not much leveled land, do we try to level that land? And that's when we learned, you know, after living here for three years, that basically we have a lake on our lot for, you know, two or three months out of the year. And then also on the back, so which is on the north side of the lot, so on the upper left section, it's also a topographical low. So, there's actually a hole back there as well. So, you know, based on the topography, you can understand why they built that land, but the house, as close as they did to that back corner. So, I just wanted to make sure that I pointed that out, that from that perspective, just based on the slope itself, on an average slope, yes, it's considerable. As you go up the hillside, there's more steeper lots, but from our side, we actually have this area of catchment of water on our lot that definitely significantly affects and actually limits us to a place where we can even put this detached garage. On point B, because of these physical circumstances and strict application of this code creates an exceptional undue hardship, and I really want to point on the "or" undue hardship upon the property owner that would deprive the applicant rights and commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. Really want to, you know, when it states it in the actual findings, is the strict application of the code places an undue hardship on the property owner and may deprive them of the ability and enjoy, commonly enjoy, amenity as well as the means of ingress and egress. And so, when we submitted this application, you know, as we were reading this through, and it says "or undue hardship," from that perspective, so because of the lot location, the wells, the septic, so our septic is back there, and when we bought the home in 2020, the septic was replaced. And so, from into the summer of 2021, we basically re-landscape that whole back part, you know, put all new grass in that part. And so, not only from this perspective of having to either, you know, bring down the deck from that three-foot and kind of one-foot interval from that, we'd also be looking at putting new piers, new location. The parts, you know, that I put in my application or in our application that I'm most concerned about is actually the egress location, so the back door from that perspective. Because it's three feet, if we have that, the... there's a build-out on our kitchen, and so the egress, if we move that deck even further, it definitely limits us from having anything out on that deck, and from that perspective, it would just be a limitation to basically get in and out of the building. As well as the stairs that were added, the run to the stairs to get down to ground level is the part that was basically added somewhere in between 2002 and 2009. That was basically the non-conformance, right, that happened. From that perspective, so from the upper two bedrooms, the way to get down one way of egress, if there was a fire, is actually through those stairs and back down that way. So, I have concerns, you know, from our bedrooms as far as egress, so not only on a financial but also on a kind of a health and safety perspective of having that deck. So, from that note, it just, you know, reiteration that, you know, from other things that this, you know, obviously is kind of an undue hardship. We've kind of... we have been spending time, obviously, on effort on that. You know, we're seeking a variance, seeking approval for that variance, and then also a future acceptance for, you know, our building permit for the garage.
You have 3 minutes and 21 seconds for rebuttal. Are there any questions of Mr. Hackinson by the board members? Doesn't appear we have. Are there any questions of the applicant by staff?
No questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case? Come forward and state and spell your name for the record, please.
I'd just like to... I have a clerk, now one, and I have a testimony. So, each for your... Let me see. Let me see. I'll proceed then. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Gregory King. My wife and I live at...
Spell your name for the record.
I'm sorry. K-I-N-G.
Thank you.
My wife and I live at 8001 Downhill Circle, which is west of and immediately adjacent to the petitioner's property. What I'd like to do are two things. Number one, I'd like to discuss the nature and extent of the encroachment. If you would, please turn to page 17. The common property line is shown on the far left. That is the property line that my wife and I share with the petitioners. The setback line is the dotted line, and of course, the encroachment line is that irregular vertical line between the property line and the setback line. First of all, I would like to point out that this two-lever... two-level deck, as David has described, extends the full length of the back of the residence. As David noted, well, excuse me, as staff noted, the encroachment was not of the making of the petitioners here. And the details of that, staff has set out at page 3 of the package that has been submitted by staff, so I'm not going to go into that. I consider the encroachment to be slight in nature. It doesn't extend three feet. It narrows down, as you can see at page 17. There's just one point where you have an encroachment at three feet, and by my calculations or estimate, the remainder of the encroachment would be one foot or less. I recognize there's a public interest here, but my wife and I are the only ones that are directly affected by this encroachment, and we have no objection to the request for variance. In fact, we support that request. Now, secondly, I'd like to go into some analysis of the staff's analysis, and, you know, staff, of course, has concluded that they can't recommend that the variance be granted because A and B criteria under G2 are problematical, that there's only been partial compliance. That seems to be based upon... First of all, I'll go to B first. Staff finds that there is an undue hardship, but apparently they're saying that it's not... well, the physical circumstances don't exist. So, you go back to one, which pertains... excuse me, A, which pertains to the physical circumstances. My opinion is those exceptional circumstances do exist. I'm wrapping up now.
Good.
And the reason for that is what staff fails to recognize is there is a significant slope that traverses the Hawkinson's property from east to west, with the west being at the highest level. It's a pervasive, meaning broad and lengthy slope, and the net result is the property couldn't be located anywhere else than where it is located, where it was built in 1978. And what small alterations to the deck that were made sometime in the 2000s, they're minimal. It's really de minimis. So, I would ask that the board grant the variance that's been requested. Thank you.
Are there any questions of Mr. King by the board members? Apparently not. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess there was a bunch of other things I should have said. Anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone else wishing to testify in case 2024-0015? Anyone at all? Seeing none. Does the staff have any rebuttal?
No, Madam Chair.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal?
No matter.
He indicates not. Then the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Smythe?
I move in case 2024-0015 to approve a variance from AMC Table 21.06-1, Table Dimensional Standards, residential districts to allow a deck to encroach three feet within a 10-foot side setback in the R6, low-density residential district, subject to the conditions shown on page 5 and 6 of the staff report.
Is there a second? Yes. Mr. Hale, seconded. It has been moved and seconded that a variance be granted to allow a deck to encroach three feet within a 10-foot side setback in the R6 zoning district, subject to conditions 5 and 6 of the staff report. Mr. Smythe, will you speak to your motion, please?
Yeah, thank you, through the chair. I intend to support my motion. I agree with the owner on items A and B, and with the staff packet on all remaining elements. I think the board has longstanding precedence of approving items such as this, very similar circumstances. That's all.
Mr. Hale?
Thank you, through the chair. I'll just add that this is a... the R6 is a one-acre minimum for building on, and this parcel is smaller than that, which makes it the non-conforming. There's a lot of that going around in this community, old subdivisions. So, that in itself, the fact that it's not a full acre, limits the ability of people to develop in the same way as people with an acre. So, that is one thing. The slopes are another. The topography on the site also limit it. So, when you put the smaller size of the lots plus the topography, I think that's a mitigating... a factor that's... allows us to feel good about granting a variance.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Anyone else? Seeing and hearing none. Are you ready for the question? The question is on the adoption of the motion to grant a variance to allow a deck to encroach three feet within a 10-foot side setback in the R6 residential district, subject to conditions 5 and 6 of the staff report. A yes vote will grant the variance, a no vote will deny the variance. Please vote.
Mr. Ramardal, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
There are five votes in the affirmative and no votes in the negative. The variance is granted. Six, sorry. Six votes in the affirmative. Moving on to the next case. The next case is case 2024-0014. The applicant is Chris Kohler of the Chugatch Electrical Association. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. 167 public hearings were mailed on January 17, 2024. At the time the staff report was written, no public comments had been received. The Bay Shore, CLAC Community Council did not provide comments. However, we did receive, one, two, three, four, five, five public comments that were received late, and they're in a supplemental handout. Thank you.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none. Will the staff please present the case?
Thank you. Chugatch Electric Association is applying for variances from two provisions required by municipal code regarding landscaping and fencing. They state that in residential districts, chain-link plastic or vinyl fencing screening is prohibited, and in residential districts, security wire, such as barbed wire, razor, or concertina wire, is prohibited. And... And where it is allowed, it must be inverted inside the fence, so cantilevered in the direction internal to the site. This applies to telecommunications towers. These two regulations that I'm reading on page two. The zoning of the petition site is Zoned R1 Single Family Residential District. CEA is proposing a chain-link gate, so the only chain-link they're proposing is for the gate. It would have vinyl slats to provide screening. This is at the entryway to the site. If the variance is denied, then the gate must be constructed of a different material that isn't chain-link or vinyl slats. CEA is also proposing a variance to allow cantilevered barbed wire on top of the fence surrounding the site. And the barbed wire, that's the other prohibited material. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the original substation in 1975. This is an unmanned electrical substation. The surrounding neighborhood is composed primarily of single-family detached homes on individual lots. In the spring of 2023 -- oh, I'm sorry. In this upcoming spring, 2024, CEA plans to undertake a complete rebuild of the electrical substation and to add a telecommunications tower to improve reliability of the substation. None of the state and reviewing municipal, state and municipal reviewing agencies objected to the granting of these variances. In regards to the approval criteria, approval criteria A is not met. There are no exceptional, extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property. There are no streams, wetlands, or sloping topography. CEA writes in their application that the uniqueness of the property is the fact that it is an electrical substation, which houses sensitive, dangerous equipment, and that necessitates the barbed wire for, on the fence for security. Approval criteria B is not met. There are no unique physical circumstances of the subject property. Therefore, physical circumstances cannot create an exceptional hardship on the property owner. CEA says that chain-link and barbed wire are allowed on electrical substations, but these materials are prohibited at this site because the substation includes internal to the site a telecommunications tower, and it's located in a residential district. CEA says that it should have the right to secure its critical electrical infrastructure. CEA is required to comply with National Electric Safety Code, and the proposed gate and fence follow the design guidelines in those codes. Approval criteria C is not met. There's no peculiarity of the lot that arises from a natural condition of the land. Structures in the lot are not considered a natural condition of the land. CEA says, argues that the uniqueness of the land is that it's an electrical substation and barbed wire is needed for site security. And then for the second part, there's no natural physical condition of the land preventing the owner from complying with the zoning requirement. CEA is seeking a chain-link gate and vinyl slats when these materials are prohibited. There are alternatives to those materials. CEA is requesting cantilevered barbed wire on top of the fence encircling the site, which is not permitted on telecommunications facilities. CEA's application states that compliance with the restrictions on the fence materials is not self-imposed and is needed to protect their vital infrastructure. CEA has had chain-link gate with slats and barbed wire topping the existing 10-and-a-half foot tall fence at this site for decades, but these materials are not permitted as a result of the new tower that they're adding internal to the site. Approval criteria D is met. The standard assumes the violation will not be injurious to the neighborhood or detrimental to public welfare if the variance is granted. The types of materials used are the chain-link, vinyl slats, cantilevered barbed wire. They do not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. Approval criteria E is also met. The requested variances are for the use of banned fence materials, not variances for prohibited use of the property. The site has conditional use approvals for electrical substation and telecommunications tower. The granting of these variances would not change the character of the zoning district. Approval criteria F is met. There are no identified health or safety issues with the property. The owner is seeking relief from restrictions on the types of permitted fence materials in order to continue using chain-link with vinyl slats and barbed wire. If the variances are approved, then they will proceed with these materials in the rebuild. CEA argues that the site would be less secure without the barbed wire. CEA states that proposed fence material contributes to safety and the well-being of the community. Approval criteria G is met. This is not related to ADA accessibility and reasonable accommodation. Approval criteria H is not met. CEA can rebuild the fence without using prohibited fence materials. The use of the property as an electrical substation will continue whether or not the variances are granted. CEA wants to use chain-link with vinyl slats and cantilevered barbed wire for convenience and for additional site security. CEA states in their application that proposed fence materials are essential for safeguarding the electrical infrastructure and are the smallest deviation from fence material requirements. The department finds that approval criteria A, B, C, and H are not met and therefore must recommend denial of both variances. If after a public hearing, the Board finds that all eight approval criteria are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to conditions one, two, and three on page eight of your packet. I'd be happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff by the Board? Mr. Smythe?
Thanks through the Chair. Mr. McGlaughlin, does the gate that was there, was it non-conforming? Did it ever meet, was it built and didn't meet the requirements?
Thank you for the question. It's an excellent question, Mr. Smythe. The fence is half a foot too tall under existing fence requirements in existing code. And it has barbed wire, which is allowed to have being even today because it's a utility substation. It's the, they're going to rebuild the substation anew, but they're also adding something that isn't presently there. It's like a telemetry tower for communicating with their substation. And that tower is, you know, treated like a cellphone tower in a residential district, and you're not allowed to have chain-link nor barbed wire. I hope, I kind of lost track of your question, but I hope I answered it.
I think well enough. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Hale?
Thank you through the Chair. Our, this is weird to me. It seems almost like it's incompatible uses or something. What is the difference between, if it's just an electrical substation, you can have barbed wire, but you can't because it's a tower? What's different about towers?
You know, I don't really know the answer to that question, but I have thought about, about the, that question. I think that we've seen telecommunications towers spring up all throughout our community and, you know, in, in residential neighborhoods and close to people's homes and as maybe kind of compatibility aesthetic design requirement in our zoning code. The current towers regulations want to remove the aesthetics that kind of look like prison or industrial and make them more compatible with a residential neighborhood. And I think, I think that that makes a good bit of sense. This one is sort of an interesting wrinkle on that because the tower is actually, you know, not just standalone next to the homes. It's within a utility substation that's been there since the development of the neighborhood. And so the tower isn't standalone, but is actually, you know, located with, behind the fence line within the substation. And the utility substation is allowed to have those materials.
And so probably the, if it's just a tower, you know, someone can access it and they're not going to die because they're touching the tower, but with the electric, they could potentially die. That's why you're allowed to have the-
That's an excellent point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so what's interesting is when the two applications, one for the tower and one for the utility substation, went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they were conditional use applications a few months ago. They were both approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. But, you know, the conditional use for the utility substation was approved, conditional use for the, for the tower, the telemetry tower were approved. But when Chugatch Electric wanted to have the chain-link gate and the vinyl slats and the barbed wire, those were caught during that conditional use review for the tower, for the telemetry tower, and that necessitated the variance that you see today.
And so what I wondered is if it was just a tower, is there a design criteria that is effective at providing security for towers? So it limits access from the public? Does it require barbed wire?
Well, it just says that when you're in a residential district or near a residential district, you can't use some of these, you know, materials that maybe are offensive or not commonly found in a residential district. Like my home doesn't, my R1 home doesn't have barbed wire, you know. My house doesn't happen to have a chain-link gate, but my last house did. So there's that.
Maybe a question for the petitioner.
Yes, through the Chair. Just to clarify, question on page two. They are able to put the inverted inside as a fallback option. Is that true in the original statement?
No, thank you for highlighting that. To explain, so because it's a residential zoning district or near a residential zoning district, a telecommunications tower may not have barbed wire at all. But if, if you were in a zoning district that allowed the fence to have barbed wire, it's required to be inverted internal to the site. In looking at the, the fence details on page 30 of your packet, it appears that it's cantilevered out, facing outward, and, and that's, I just felt like I should clarify or write about that.
So that just means in all the locations outside of R1, the inverted is allowed, but not in R1? Is that?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions up staff?
Just for clarification, if the tower was placed outside of the substation walls, would that, would this discussion even be happening at this point?
We discussed that with Chugatch Electric, but I can't, I can't remember. I don't know the answer to that question.
Would the, would the barbed wire be allowed on the substation on top of the wall, the way they're asking for it to be constructed if the tower wasn't there?
Correct. Yeah, that's, that's a good point. So the chain-link gate with vinyl slats and the cantilevered barbed wire are both allowed with utility substation. They're allowed. It's, it's the addition of the, the tower, and it's a separate section of code and the, that's newer. And those regulations specifically prohibit these uses, or these fence materials. So the substation may have them, you know, as proposed. It's the tower that makes it not allowed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward and state and spell your name for the record?
Sierra Larson, L-A-R-S-O-N.
Please present your case.
Good evening, members of the zoning board of Examiners and Appeals. I'm with New Horizons Telecom, and I'm here representing Chugatch Electric Association. I stand before you today to present a variance request pertaining to the installation of a communications tower within an electric substation located in the R1 zoning district. The substation is proposed to be rebuilt. This variance request follows the conditional use permits 2023-0078 and 79, which were previously approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in October 23 for the installation of the communications tower and overall substation rebuild respectively. As part of the CUP approvals, the owner was directed to either modify their fence and gate design or obtain a variance. Our variance request seeks permission to install a chain-link gate and security wire, which are currently prohibited in residential districts under Title 21, Chapter 21, 05, 040 K for telecommunications towers. We agree with planning staff that approval criteria D, E, F, and G are met. While planning staff's report indicates that standards A, B, C, and H are not met, we are confident that these have also been met, and this presentation provides our justification for the variance. The electric substation has been a vital part of this community since its establishment in 1975, predating the current zoning regulations. The chain-link gate and security wire, which exists at the site in its current state today, are integral to maintaining perimeter security of the site and facilitating access and maintenance activities. The enhanced security is critical to protect the integrity of the substation equipment as well as the proposed communications tower, which will serve as a crucial component of CEA's infrastructure, enabling communication, monitoring, and control of their substation equipment, security surveillance, and network connectivity enhancement. We argue that public utility infrastructure should be exempt from these stringent residential regulations, considering its critical role in providing and maintaining these essential services to the community. CEA previously collaborated with the municipality to amend Title 21. Part of this amendment was to allow taller-height fences and chain-link gates for security and maintenance reasons similar to what is being discussed here. CEA utilizes chain-link gates and security wire at other substation locations, including those in residential districts, such as a substation on DeBar. The site's unique characteristics, including the conflicting code requirements between substations and standalone telecom towers, necessitates a nuanced approach to regulatory interpretation. If this were a utility substation with no telecom tower, we would not need to request this variance. It would be allowed per the code. In addition, Section 11.110 of the National Electric Safety Code states that utilities are required to install a physical barrier at electric supply stations to limit likelihood of entrance of unauthorized persons or interference by them with equipment inside. This section calls for fence fabric or combination of fence fabric and barbed wire with overall height of no less than seven feet. Chugatch Electric has standardized a 10-foot fence height with barbed wire, considering the large volumes of snow that occur in Anchorage, which can allow persons and animals to bypass the lowest several feet of any physical barrier that would be installed. Maintaining consistent security measures, including the use of chain-link gate and security wire, is essential for safeguarding the integrity of the substation and ensuring uninterrupted service delivery from the substation. This, in addition to the surveillance camera capabilities that the tower will allow, will ensure that site security is maintained at all times. In an effort to address concerns regarding the visual impact of these items, we provide the following statements. The gate itself is obscured from direct view due to the angle of the driveway to the property. It is not detrimental to the overall aesthetic of the site. There are properties directly across from- There are properties directly across from across the street from the substation along Southport Drive that currently utilize chain link fencing. It's approximately 350 feet in length. Security wire has existed for years at the site with no complaints or removal requests to speak of. In conclusion, we respectfully request that the zoning board of examiners and appeals grant the variance, allowing for the installation of the proposed chain link gate and security wire within the electric substation, despite the planning staff report. Our proposal aligns with the overarching goal of ensuring the reliability, security, and functionality of essential public utility infrastructure, while also acknowledging the unique regulatory challenges posed by conflicting code requirements. We appreciate your time and consideration of our variance request, and we remain committed to upholding high standard of regulatory compliance and community stewardship. I will reserve the remaining time allotted in my presentation for rebuttals. Thank you.
You have four minutes and 40 seconds of rebuttal time. Are there any questions of Ms. Larson by the board members? Mr. Smye.
Thank you. Through the chair, you mentioned that these conditions exist at other Chugatch substations around the town. Two questions, is that a design standard besides the fence to have the barbed wire on top? And do you know how many other substations in residential areas have the same material?
Yeah, good question. I don't know exactly how many, but I do know a specific example, like the one I referenced on Debar is located in a residential district and it does include these conditions, the chain link and the barbed wire. And Chugatch has standardized these materials for ease of access and maintenance and just standardizing things across the board.
Any other questions of Ms. Larson?
May I, I guess, provide more answer for his question? My name is Mike Miller.
Wait, wait, wait. What are we doing?
May I answer his question question for him more thoroughly? Am I allowed to come up and speak?
He can provide additional insight on the question that was answered or asked.
Your name and spell it for the record.
My name is Mike Miller, M I L L E R. I'm the vice president of engineering for Chugatch Electric.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we have standardized on barbed wire and chain link gates or slats for, I would say, almost all of our substations around town. There are lots of examples of that that exist around town in residential areas such as O'Malley Substation, Hillside Substation, Huffman Substation, Debar Substation, which is the most recent substation that we rebuilt in a residential neighborhood in, I believe, 2018, in which we had to get new conditional use permits for that station as well. It also has a tower on it. So there's lots of examples. It is a standard material that we've been using for an extended period of time.
Which one of you? Do you both have questions?
Sorry, through the chair. Did you say that you have another substation with a tower on it?
Yes, Debar Substation does have communication.
Did you guys have to get a variance for that tower to get barbed wire on it?
At that time, we did not. My understanding is that the existing, the current Title 21 code did not apply at that time for that tower. There's some nuance there that I can't personally speak to. I wasn't involved in that permitting process, but we did not.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes, through the chair. I'm looking at some of the photos that were submitted, and one of them is for your substation, I believe it's at 2940 O'Malley, the Haynes Station.
Yes.
It does appear to have a communication tower on it.
Yes.
And that station, I believe, is substantially bigger than the one at Southport. Is that true?
Yes, that's correct.
And I do, it does not appear to have barbed wire on the fence that's in the photo. It's only on the fence. Is there a reason for that?
That is correct. So that is the one substation that I know of in which we attempted to not utilize barbed wire. And we had experienced lots of issues with vandalism at that property, in addition to some recent developments we had in the last couple of years at another substation in which an individual was able to access the substation, shock themselves on some high voltage equipment, and severely injure themselves and cause an extensive outage to our downtown area. And so after we attempted to not utilize barbed wire at Haynes Substation, we found that the absence of barbed wire was detrimental to our ability to secure our sites. And I guess I'll provide one minor clarification, which is that the gate at Haynes Substation is chain link with slats, and it also has, the gate itself has barbed wire on it.
True, I see that down there.
Yeah.
I was just curious, because that's in a residential area, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I guess I'm confused as to why no barbed wire there in a residential area, but you want barbed wire in this other substation in the Southport area that we're talking about.
Yeah, so so as I spoke to, that was our one attempt as a utility to forego barbed wire as a security measure. As I stated, we experienced a lot of copper theft and vandalism at that site during and after construction. We actually wound up electing to do more, I guess, clearing, I guess you could say, like increased visibility at that property in order to better deter that kind of activity, which in itself is somewhat detrimental to the community to remove visible barriers. And so since that experience, we have gone back to our standard of barbed wire. All the substations built prior to that, substation had barbed wire, and substations built since then, we've also done barbed wire.
So the lack of barbed wire in this substation in O'Malley has hasn't, doesn't show any sign that it's not, that not, no barbed wire has not resulted in any kind of vandalism inside the station? I guess I'm confused as to why this station doesn't have barbed wire and you don't seem to have problems, but you want barbed wire in every other substation.
As I stated, the recent experience we had in, I believe it was 2022, with an individual was able to scale a wall and get into a substation and severely injure themselves and cause an outage, has reinforced our desire to want to have barbed wire in order to prevent those kinds of activities.
Okay. So I guess the next question would be, how come you haven't put barbed wire on this station yet?
And that is a valid question. I don't have an answer for that.
Okay.
Myself.
Thank you.
Anybody else have other questions of the petitioners?
Thank you, through the chair. Are the the NECs, you guys follow those requirements, do they require barbed wire on these things for the design?
So as we stated in our, I guess, our case here, it calls for a a fence fabric and/or barbed wire of at least seven feet. And then understanding where we live in with the volumes of snow we get and how that allows a change in grade, so to speak, at these kinds of sites, we go with a 10-foot fence with the barbed wire. So the code doesn't explicitly require barbed wire in of itself, but that is something that we standardized on based on the volumes of snow we get and our want to prevent any kind of, I guess, unauthorized entrance into our sites.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just kind of curious if there's any national efforts to provide security that doesn't include barbed wire? Or is it just everybody doing barbed wire?
I can't speak to that on a national level. It's something that Chugatch Electric and the neighboring electric utilities along the rail belt, my understanding is we all employ barbed wire at our sites. Thanks.
Thank you, through the chair. My question, my next question is, goes back to the gates. Is there any particular reason why you couldn't use a wood fence gate versus a chain link fence gate? Because it seems like the wood fence would be compliant. I know the existing one is chain link, but is there a reason why wood couldn't be used versus the chain link fence?
Sure. So the chain link with the slats, understanding kind of the size of the gate that we need to employ for our large equipment and bucket trucks and things like that, is the one that is the most agreeable as far as like a maintenance and ability to open it year-round aspect for access, should we need to get in for any kind of activities related to outages or reliability or maintenance. And then just the the materials in it itself are a lot less, I guess, subject to failures related to there being large snow loads and things like that that we maybe need to mitigate when we're opening the gate. And just the weight of the gate as well is another factor, not needing to have any kind of things like wheels or other mechanisms to, that could potentially fail while we're trying to access the site. One more thing that we do with the gates, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but another thing that we do in our gates is typically we have our man gate actually be installed within our vehicle gate, which is something that is more reasonably accomplished utilizing chain link. And so for those purposes, we find that the chain link really gives us the ability to properly maintain our sites and have access that we need 24/7 year-round.
Okay, so you you have used wood before and found that it failed worse than the chain link? Is that, has that been used before, or is it just based on a standard that you've you've seen in other areas of the country?
So I cannot say that we've used wood for a gate specifically, but my understanding from talking to staff is that we have attempted to use wood for fencing materials at our sites, and it has created challenges for us.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 2024-0014? Come forward, state, and spell your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Marcus Reed, R E E D. I live two houses from this substation. So everything they're saying is actually correct about the current condition of the substation. Because of this, the unique location of this particular substation at the entrance to several master planned communities, there's currently an appeal in process for the approvals that this board rendered in October. And I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but it's it's currently in process. The Southport Master Association actually submitted that. So simply, just because of that, I think this hearing should be delayed. Any decision on this appeal should be delayed until after that appeal has gone through and and because there is some concerns about what these, this substation is going to look like at the, when it's concluded with its upgrades. That's all I have.
Are there any questions of Mr. Reed by the board? Mr. Flynn?
Can you elaborate on what appeal you're you're talking about? Is it an appeal of the actual construction of the of what they want to build or the tower? Or what is it that you're appealing?
I think it's, I think it's both, to be honest with you. I think there's a, there's a question on the height of the tower, if it's necessary in that particular application. And then, of course, the material that they're going to replace that fence with, because currently there's a chain link fence, and on the outside of that, there is an association fence, which hides that chain link fence. And I think there's a question of the aesthetic entering the community.
Through the chair, Mr. Flynn, there, the the Southport, I'm sorry, there, there is an appeal that has been submitted and accepted and is being processed. And my understanding, the two points of appeal are the height of the tower, 65-foot tall tower, the appellant is arguing it's too tall, and that also the granting of a variance from the landscape requirements. I think it's L2 buffer landscaping is required along the east boundary of the petition site along Southport Drive. And the Chugatch Electric, or the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a variance to substitute shrubs for trees where they intend to install a vault exterior to the fence. Those are the two points of appeal, as I understand them.
Mr. McLaughlin, so not, not appeal of decisions by this board, but the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Correct. And it just, I wanted to jump in because I don't think it had to do with fence material. It was about landscaping and, so I just, that's my understanding.
My apologies. I misunderstood what the, who granted that.
Any other questions of Mr. Reed? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify in case 2024-0014? Please come forward and state your name and spell it for the record, please.
Kate Potoskey, P as in planning, E T O S K E Y, Potoskey. I am secretary of the Bay Shore Clack Community Council.
And you're testifying on their behalf?
If I need five minutes, maybe.
You have to decide.
Well, what I was going to tell you in that regard is that some time ago, the Bay Shore Clack Council issued a resolution against said tower and landscaping variance requests. And that's been on file for several months. But tonight I was going to speak as myself in opposition to this particular variance. I tend to agree with Mr. Reed. I find that tonight's subject is very interconnected with the other two cases that are on appeal, which are number 2023-78 and 79, that were approved at P and Z in September, actually, but appealed by the Southport Master. I'm in opposition to this latest related variance for barbed wire and chain link. The application stresses security interest based on breaches at other locations, yet their request for landscaping on case 2023-79 included equipment located outside of the fence for convenience sake. So Chugatch can't have it both ways. We haven't received any data or reports on security breaches at our station or other locations. At least this is consistent with their pattern of not providing studies or data on things such as the cost of fiber to our substation, alternate sites, alternate designs, homeland security requirements, et cetera, et cetera. They have not previously communicated that they had security concerns for this location. It makes you wonder, what are they afraid of? Are they afraid of the Bay Shore Elementary kids walking to school? Are they afraid of Mears Junior High cross-country team training on those bike trails? Is it my neighbor taking her twins in the stroller down to the four-way stop and back? You know, it's just hard to imagine. Our 14 surrounding HOAs that make up the Southport Master have restrictive covenants and are zoned P U D. Barbed wire and chain link do not reflect this type of development. It doesn't belong in a neighborhood such as ours.
You need to sum up. Your time is up, so you need to.
Okay. Well, what I wanted to say is, this project makes a mockery of responsible. Well, what I wanted to say is, this project makes a mockery of responsible development and planning. PUD zoning should mean something. Our location is not DeBar. We're in a planned community, and there is no barbed wire at Hayne-O'Malley, there's no barbed wire at Jewel Lake. You know, it's not just DeBar. So, you know, the last one, I would think, that should have it is Southport, for heaven's And if this approval is given on this project, I just think to myself, you know, God help the rest of our city. All the time and effort invested in Title 21 and Anchorage 2040 should mean something. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Potoskey. Anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone else wishing to testify in case 2024-0014? Please come forward, state and spell your name for the record, please.
Sage Stoneking, S-T-O-N-E-K-I-N-G. I'm also a neighborhood in the Bay Shore area, Bay Shore Clat area.
You're going to have to speak up a little louder, we can't...
Oh, my God, I'm so sorry. I am just going to give my support to Chugatch Electric for their barbed wire. While our neighborhood is incredibly safe, I will not deny that, it is a matter of safety, they have it standardized across the rest of their infrastructure. Our neighborhood is no different. Our neighborhood and its 14 HOAs, were built after the substation, and it's just a matter of infrastructural safety and security, and spray paint exists. So, I'm just giving my support to the barbed wire.
Could you spell your name one more time?
Yes, I'm so sorry. It's Stoneking, S-T as in Tony, O-N as in Nancy, E-K-I-N-G.
Thank you, Ms. Stoneking. Anyone else wish to testify in this case? Anyone at all? Seeing none? Are there any questions? Does the staff have any rebuttal?
No, Madam Chair.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal? Mr. Miller?
Thank you.
You can move it up, you don't have to bend down.
Okay.
I mean, you can move up the, there you go.
Not used to doing this, my apologies. Just real quickly, I'll just speak a little bit and then let Sierra do her thing. With regards to the question of the equipment outside the substation, that equipment is of a different nature than the equipment that's inside the substation. Stuff inside the substation is air insulated, high voltage equipment in which, if you were to touch it at all, you would get shocked by high voltage, whereas the stuff we're putting outside is actually enclosed in a protective shell. It's also secured utilizing what we call a pentalock, which has a special key that you can't just get anywhere to open. So, it's a, the nature of that equipment is different. So, I just wanted to mention that. Additionally, I know it was mentioned that Jewel Lake Substation doesn't have barbed wire, but it actually does in fact have barbed wire, and you can confirm that by looking at Google Street View if you'd like. And with that, I will turn it over to Sierra real quick, and then I can come back up if you guys have questions.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that Chugatch Electric's request for site security is not a direct reflection of the community and is by no means an assumption that any, it is a bad community. It's, as Ms. Stoneking said, it's a standard across the board, it's a need to protect the critical, critical infrastructure that the site houses. I also wanted to speak a little bit to the appeal that was brought up, and I just wanted to reiterate that this, the items that we're requesting here in the variance today are not the direct items that are being repealed, appealed by the community. This is a standalone request, and we would like it to be looked at on an independent basis. So, I think that's all.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, since we have another two minutes and 50 seconds, I would just like to add that while we've done a good job of speaking to the need to secure our sites for our equipment, this is also something that we do in order to protect the public. As I've stated previously, we have incidences in which we've had individuals enter our substations and severely injure themselves. And so, understanding that while this community, this certain neighborhood or community may not feel as though there is a lot of potential for vandalism, that doesn't necessarily mean that there isn't potential for curious individuals within the community, young or old, to attempt to access the site, being unaware or unknowing of the hazards that exist within the site to their health. And so, I just wanted to highlight the fact that we secure our sites not just for our infrastructure, but also for the good of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so done with that. The public hearing is now closed. Mad arrests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Whoop, hang on. Your question of whom? Of staff, okay. Mr. Flynn?
Thank you, through the chair. This question's for the staff, just for clarifying Ms. Larson's statement that our vote tonight won't impact on the appeal that Mr. Reed spoke to.
That's correct. Just to elaborate, a utility substation in the R1 district and also telecommunications tower in the R1 district, those both require conditional use approval. And because they're rebuilding their existing substation and they're adding something that isn't there, the tower, they applied for a conditional use permits and were approved. Within those conditional use permit applications, there were two different applications for two different things, although they're on the same site and, and related for, for the purposes, operational purposes of the, the property owner. There was a variance for, from the landscaping standard along one side of the property. And there, there was an appeal of, of those approvals, and that's, will be set for the Board of Adjustment in the near future, and is not related to the application for a zoning variance for fence material that's before you today.
Thank you.
So, now, I would like, may I have a positive motion, please? Your motion?
I'm sorry. I move in case 2024-0014 to approve a variance from AMC 21.05.040K.7.G.I. to allow a chain link gate with final slats as shown in the fence detail drawing for substation, subject to the conditions shown on page six of the staff report.
And Mr. Smythe, seconds. It has been moved and seconded for a variance to allow a chain link gate with final slats, subject to conditions on page six of the staff report. Mr. Hale, will you speak to your motion, please?
This is kind of tough. I'm looking at the findings, A, B, C in particular. And it's true that there's not any streams, wetlands, slopes, any extraordinary conditions like that, but I do think that a substation is a physical feature that does affect the use of the property. And of course, it affects the surrounding properties as well. I'm sympathetic to the fact that high voltage electricity tends to kill people, and that it's important to protect our infrastructure for the community and to keep each other safe, same reason we have licensure, is to protect the public. So, although it's not a stream or wetlands issue, I do believe that the physical circumstances of this is that it is a substation. It would be allowed if it wasn't for the tower. And just because you had a tower, it doesn't take away the need to protect the infrastructure that would be there with barbed wire, you know, if it wasn't for the tower. So, I, I think that with the physical limitation of the fact that it is a substation and it's been existing there for a while, I'm going to support my motion.
It has been pointed out that there's actually two variances here, and this is the first variance. And this is the variance to allow the gate with metal slats. And the other variance is the one that will address the barbed wire. So, they're kind of closely related, but this...
That makes sense.
You're, you're, you're talking, you're addressing just the gate right now, and so, you're good?
I'm for the gate.
Mr. Smythe?
Through the chair, I also intend to support the motion, the applicant's. I agree with the applicant's presentation of trying to reduce cost and maintain standards. That makes a lot of sense for utilities, for all kinds of clients that deal with this over and over again. It exists on the other facilities, I'm going to, I intend to support the motion.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Flynn, Mr. Santos, Mr. Romertal? Are you ready for the question? Okay, so this is just the first, there will be another one. This is a question on the adoption of a motion to grant a variance to allow a chain link gate with vinyl slats, subject to conditions shown on page six of the staff report. A yes vote will grant the variance and a no vote will deny the variance. Please vote.
Mr. Romertal, how do you vote?
Yes. Excuse me, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Flynn? Voting?
Can you vote? No.
He voted no. Okay. So, there are five yes votes and one no vote, and the variance is granted. And then, we will move on to the second part, which addresses the cantilevered barbed wire fence topping. Moved by Mr. Hale, seconded by Mr. Smythe. Mr. Hale?
I move in case 2024-0014 to approve a variance from AMC 21.05.040K.7.G.I. to allow a cantilevered barbed wire fence topping the entire fence as shown in the fence detail drawing for substation, subject to the conditions shown on page six of the staff report.
And seconded by Mr. Smythe. Mr. Hale, will you speak to your motion, please?
I intend to support my motion for the same reasons as the previous motion.
Mr. Smythe?
Thank you, through the chair. Also, I think in this case, the life safety concerns override anything else that I've heard tonight.
Any further discussion? If not, ready for the question? The question is on the adoption of a motion to allow cantilevered barbed wire fence topping for the entire fence, subject to conditions shown on page six of the staff report. A yes vote will grant the variance and a no vote will deny the variance. Please vote.
Mr. Romertal, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
There are five votes in the affirmative and one vote in the negative, and the variance is granted. Okay, that's the end of public hearings. Reports by the chair, I have done, secretary, she has done, we don't have any committees. Board member comments, would like to thank Mr. Smythe for his service on the board. This is his last meeting, which is too bad because now we're down to five. You could reconsider. Okay. Hmm? Been a member since 2017? So, you think you've done your bit? Okay. Anybody else?
It's Leven? Oh.
That's commenting. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Mr. Flynn? And Mr. Hale, seconds, we are adjourned.